Let me call this meeting to order of the Library Board of Trustees for Wednesday, April the 10th, here at City Hall. We'll now move on to item two on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Juanita, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, now, we'll move on now to item three, the adoption of the agenda. With the exception of under item five, discussion items five eight, we're going to go ahead and table that item. Daniza won't be here. One of our members' fathers, Chris Hernandez, Chris Hernandez's father passed away, and they're going to be, they're prepping the services, and services will be, viewing will be Thursday night at Karun's, and Friday morning at Sacred Heart, it will be the mass, the funeral mass, and it's at Karun's. And, you know, Chris just lost his brother a month ago, and the father passed away over the weekend. So that's why Chris and Daniza aren't here today, all right? So we'll table item eight, we'll table that, Karina, for the agenda for May. So I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and adopt the agenda as presented, with the exception of item five eight will be tabled. Motion by Anna Doan.
Second.
Second by Juanita, to adopt the agenda of Wednesday, April the 10th, as presented, with the exception of item five eight, that will be tabled to our May meeting. Discussion, objections, motion carried. Karina, is there any call to the public?
Not at this time.
Okay, let's move on to item five, discussion items. We have two recognition plaques here for former members of this board, Nan Fitzpatrick and Marva Twates. They're not here, so if they do come in, we'll just stop then and present it to them. So let's move on to item two, National Library Week. Library Supervisor, Karina, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. So we're celebrating National Library Week all through this week. We started our programs with the solar eclipse. We give out about 2,000 glasses around the county, so that went great, and we had people showing up to the library and watching with us. And then on the children's area, we had Storytime, the garbage truck visit today, and then local author Maritza Liniquera is also coming this week. So we hear new book on the teens department. We had Santos yesterday who went to talk to the teens about Money Wise Credit. We have also Omar Villas from Villas Food Market coming up tomorrow with a speech of process, of the process of the employment and human resources. So teens are getting those talks. Then Rio Rico is moving on with Lego Time, and then partnership with Mariposa Community Health Center to create a program for women, also happening all this, this week. Also, as Tupac is going with poetry, and Sonoyta are doing bookmark making with the children's. So libraries busy this week on celebration, and then all libraries are doing the new library contest, which is now running, and it will be open until August 2nd of this year, and that will be our final thing for the National Library Week, but also moving to summer reading program.
Okay, does that conclude your report, Karina?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead. Mr. Delsey, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Santos?
No.
Brianna? Anna?
Of course. I'm really excited about what you're doing in the teen center, and Santos, thank you for presenting to our students in our community, especially about finances, and then small businesses and entrepreneurships from Mr. Omar Villa, and it's excellent, all the things that you're doing, I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Juanita?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karina, for that report. Let's move on to item three, National Poetry Month. Juan?
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Verona. Good morning, everyone. So, okay, that was National Poetry Week, but we are also National Poetry Month. So this is a month dedicated to one of the most beautiful and expressive forms of art. So National Poetry Month is a celebration of the written word, and to honor it, we would like to, we're proposing an activity within our libraries. So a couple of months ago, we had two people from the University of Arizona, the Poetry Center, came to our library, to our main library, and present us to these zines. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of them, but we all thought that they are really a very interesting thing. Basically, what those, these little things are, are, it's a handmade magazine. We thought it was very interesting, and because they're focused on self-expression, on sharing ideas, art, or maybe interviewing people, so there are no rules for these zines. The only rule is that they are DIY. So these wonderful people of the University of Arizona provide us with some kits, with, it's just a simple lip look bag that has paper, scissors, sharpener, and colors, and a glue stick, so you have all the materials here where you can start building, start creating your own zine. So we thought that it's a very good thing that we can put on our activities for the National Poetry Month. So if you guys are interested, you're very welcome to participate and help us with this project. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report, Juan?
It does, thank you.
Okay, Juanita?
Yes, keep us posted on when those activities are going to take place.
Yes, if you can help us as well, I can give you a kit, maybe at the Sonoyta Library, Tupac, wherever you guys want to help us, you're more than welcome.
We could, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anna?
Thank you, Juan. Your job is well done. Poetry is a form of music, and you're sharing it with our little chicks.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Brianna? Santos?
I just want to have a comment. I'm very glad to collaborate with the library in different ways, and the way that they find connection to the community in different forms, because beside the books, beside the environment that they create to learn and opportunities for the kids in the families, they also try to connect some other situation, like a financial capability, entrepreneurship, like Anna mentioned it, and also the poetry is another way to connect and also to develop a community, and congratulations, felicidades.
Thank you, Santos.
Good, thank you. Mr. Delsey?
I was glad to hear that the U of A is involved with the library staff in presenting this program and then taking it forward. It should really be encouraging. Thank you very much for that. Congratulations.
Well, I think we've had our last two presentations by Karina and this one by Juan. You can see the dynamics that's happening within our library system here for our community members. Item four, just to review with you, that we do have some board vacancies that are, you'll be having in June, the next month will be my last meeting, and then there, I think there's one more other vacancies, but I'm going to have that placed on there. If you think of anybody else, I'm going to have the director, Daniza Lopez, go ahead and meet, I don't, I think that both of them are from the city of Nogales, okay? The appointment, that would be the mayor and council, so we'll wait and see on that from Daniza when she's here. But we do have some vacancies, and luckily, right now, we're a strong board right now. The only one who's missing is Brian, right? And Chris, and Chris, so, but right now, we're, we're, we're okay. We're doing, we're holding our own and everything, and everybody, the members have been good, so we've always had a quorum present. Item five, Let's Read Santa Cruz. Anna Doan?
Yes. Let's Read Santa Cruz is working with the Friends of the Library, and we wrote for grants, and South 32 gave us $10,000, and Humberto Schultz-Lopez, depending on some paperwork that I have to complete, will give us $20,000, and that money is to do parent training at the libraries for the parents whose children cannot get into preschool. And the Nogales International last Friday had an article about how many parents we have. One day I was at the library, and I saw a mom with two preschool children, and I asked her, I said, you know, she was going to the library, and I said, I told her about the program and that we're just getting it started, and she said, I have 15 moms that have preschool children, and, you know, we are really hoping that you start this program, and we're, that's what we're doing. Through Books Save Lives, we've trained a lot of people, Karina is trained, Brianna's trained, and Ankele Camacho has done a really great job of working with parents on how to read the children, how to have reading time at home, all of these little details that we need for our parents. And I know that the Nogales District and the Rio Rico District both have this kindergarten readiness report that shows the humongous difference between the abilities of a child who's been through preschool and a child who is not. And so I'm really excited, we will spend the $30,000, and it's actually to get books into the home, so parents come to the training, we offer them three books, the kids have to select the books, not the parents. But we're also working with Bookmans in Tucson, and we have the repository that Brian hates to do because it's full. Well, I took all the books that I thought, Bookmans from Tucson, I spoke to the manager on the Speedway Bookmans, and he said he will buy any books that he thinks he can resell and give us store credit so that we can buy children's books, so that if a parent is there with a preschool child, but has a child in elementary, middle school, or high school, we want to offer them books too for their older children. And, you know, we can't do this through the school district, but we can do this through the library. And so the goal is to build home libraries and to tell parents the urgency of turning off all the electronics and picking up a book. Daphne Russell, who's going to be presenting today at Lincoln Elementary, she, she, she's creating a T-shirt that says, you know, put down, put down your phone and pick up a book. And so...
For my grandkids.
Yeah, and so also part of the Let's Read Santa Cruz through the County School Superintendent's Office, Books Save Lives gave us 100 books, let's say, children's books and a bookcase. So we talked to Tia Duncan at Mariposa Clinic, and she is placing it in one of the pediatric clinics, so that kids that are in the waiting room and parents have books to read, and they're brand new, beautiful, beautiful books. Daphne Russell presented at A.J. Mitchell, and these two young teachers accosted me after their presentation and said, we here, Manuel Coppola says that you have all the repositories that, you know, to recycle and to free the libraries. And I said, yes, they're in my car for takeoff, but Camila Castañeda, who's working on her high school project, is actually painting them, and we're, Chris is terrible tragedy, but he's helping us put the doors on them, so as soon as they're ready, the next one goes to A.J. Mitchell on the outside, but we had two small ones, and A.J. Mitchell said, can we put one in the lower elementary hallway and another one in the upper elementary hallway? And so I said, yes, and, but I told her that the big one, that's made out of the newspaper selling machine, it has to go outside, because we want their neighborhood to be able to participate in, you know, the flow of books, like the one that's at Colegio Petite at the end of Morley. You know, that, those books are moving, we're really excited, but we have them all over town. So, So Let's Read Santa Cruz is moving forward, we're, and we're going to have a sign up for parents who don't have, that, you know, that, that don't, whose children are not going to preschool. So as soon as we get the funding, I called yesterday, like you said, the first of April, but they said, you know, it takes a few, a few bit, we're going to start buying books, and those books are starting to go into the home, so I'm very excited, and already went into the Mariposa Clinic. Thank you. That's the end of mine.
Thank you, and I hope you continue to stress the importance of education for the pre-kinders kids. It's so important that, because that helps the school districts with better-prepared kids when they get to kindergarten. Okay, thank you for that dynamic report. We'll now move on to item six, Santa Cruiser update. Brianna?
Um, well, there's, we had about eight visits in March, in the month of March, we visit a whole bunch of schools throughout Rio Rico and Nogales, with a total of 607 students that we served through the month of March, and up to, right now, for the year, we're at 1,214 students that we've served with the Cruiser. This month is a little slow, we're getting maintenance done on it, so very important. So this month is actually our slowest month, but coming back in May, we have a lot of activities to close out the school year with the schools. We're working with the Nogales High School Graphic Design Class. They had one project where their students wrote their own children's book, and we're going to get copies of those to have on the bus for anybody to be able to read that. And then we have two coming events that are pretty exciting, that we're going to be at the Dare Field Trip with the Nogales Police Department, and Rio Rico High School is hosting a STEAM night for all of their science and technical activities that they do, and they're going to be on display with a whole bunch of different organizations as well. So we're going to be there, too.
Okay, thank you. A lot of good things happening with literacy in our community, that's great. All right, let's move on to item seven, Sonoyta Library. Juanita?
Well, I'm happy to announce that we have a clerk, and we'll soon have a full-time staff member at the Sonoyta Library. Their hours now are, let's see, noon to 5:00, Tuesday through Friday, and hoping to expand that to be open on Saturday, which was pretty successful up there. And as far as, if those of you who were at the opening, the soft opening that we had March 6th, saw that it was kind of empty, well, there are, there are four tables now, if, that's last week, I was in last week, and there are four, of small tables for, for children, and then the bookshelves are still back in, in the, to the left as you enter. And I imagine after people are working there for a while, they may come up with different arrangements and perhaps more furniture, and I'm not sure about if all the books have been shelved, can, do you know, Karina, if all the books, are there still some back in storage?
There should be some, a few boxes with books and movies.
That's right, okay, I thought that they weren't all there yet, and I finally returned my book that I checked out in September. I wanted to wait and make sure that they were all ready to go. They're checking out books, and of course, the, the community is really happy to have that wonderful space, and we will, we'll watch it progress with more books, more furniture. Thank you.
Great, another good report of literacy out in the county area there in Sonoyta. That's great. All right, let's move on now to, item eight is tabled, we're going to move on to item nine, Friends of the Library update. Mr. Delsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Friends will be meeting after this meeting today. We've been active, and thanks to Anna's initiative, with what I consider community and neighborhood kits for distribution of books.
Good.
And we've been maintaining those, especially the one at Safeway, which was the first one that we had, and proceeding with that, other sites have been located already, Anna in particular has worked very closely with community groups to get these achieved, and we'll be supplying the books. A couple of proposals have gone in through Anna's initiative, and we're looking for the results on that, to be able to support the book purchasing and distribution that will go to the neighborhood level and going through that, and most of those are going to be an area where we have active community participation in other activities at locales that will be useful for the location of those library kits. And they're being, we're being supported by the, that's the Santa Fe Foundation, Boy Scouts, helping build and finish up, plus the initiative of Anna in reaching out to some of the newspaper units that were discarded by local businesses and offered, and we were able, we were available to pick them up and update them with the Boy Scouts to have that done, and students that are making it part of their high school projects to work with to update those kits for book distribution. And so those are going throughout the community, and once we get those through, keeping them supplied with books is going to be a challenge, but I think Friends is very willing to work with it, yeah. We received a payment of $605 from the Jim Click book sales that we were able to achieve this past year, and additional funds are being through the proposals utilized to carry on the support base that Friends has with the library and the activities that they had in the last couple of months. So we're still continuing to work with the library staff and the director in getting those supplies out to be able to have the programs that they've organized, so working with that, we're still pretty good working together. And we've got a couple of new members that have come in, and we're just looking for more membership with Friends in order to be able to do that. Yeah, thank you.
I did notice for everybody, the views on YouTube of our past meetings here, and I've been noticing that there's been 70, 75, 80, 90 views that have been watching these meetings, so I think this would be an appropriate time, Mr. Delsey, for you to state to the public, how do they get involved in Friends of the Library?
We've communicated with the Nogales International publicly, and we can continue to do that, and we have good people working with us to be able to do that, and I think that's the only way that we can get our word out and, and about, and through the library system, of getting particip, patrons to participate beyond just going to the library to pick up their own books, but to be able to contribute any ideas and feedback. The previous articles that I've had published in the international, we've not gotten feedback according to Daniza's comments to me about what additions or improvements could be added.
But how would, if somebody's watching this meeting right now and says, well, I would like to see how to get myself involved with Friends, how do they do that?
We can do it directly through the director at the library.
Okay.
For a direct contact down there, and then contacting us in working with that. I think it's, it's a more direct approach through the library system to be able to do that, and then just extend the information to our membership.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Delsey. Let's move on to item 10, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes, the minutes, they should have put the date on that agenda of the minutes to be approved. The minutes of Thursday, March the 14th. Brianna?
Do I start the motion to approve?
Yes, go ahead and make your motion.
Motion to approve the minutes from March 14th?
There's a motion by Brianna to approve the minutes of Thursday, March 14th, as present, presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ed Delsey. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So my name is spelled A-N-A, or A-N-A-L-I-Z-A-B-E-P-H, not A-N-N-A. I am not Anna. I'm Anna. And so it says, Board Member Anna Doan attended, but it's one N.
One N?
Yes.
Well, this one has one N.
No, not on the bottom.
Which one?
On the bottom.
Oh, that one, okay, that's just a...
The top of it is Anna, and the bottom, they have me as Anna.
Okay, I got it. All right, well, the important one is the, just a typographical, but anyway, I would like to, at this time, also thank Judith for all the hard work that you've done for the minutes for us. They've been very professionally done, thank you very much.
And I want to mention, Brianna has prepared some minutes as well.
Okay, good. This team effort is just astounding. Okay, let's move on to item six, Board Reports, Current Events, Summary must be brief, and there cannot be any proposal, discussion, deliberation, or legal action taken. Juanita? Anything you want to talk about?
Well, I think I've, I've said everything when I gave that review of the community reaction to that. I think the only thing I would like to find a little bit more about would be the community room, which belongs, you know, to the, to the county, and Tiffany Gutlob had said something about managing it, being willing to manage it, and I, I guess that would go through Daniza and the county.
All righty.
I'd like to find out more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
I just want to thank the board for having me streamed in the last meeting so that I could attend, thank you.
Okay, Brianna?
Nothing.
Santos?
I just have a, well, I just give my card to Ed and telling him that we can do something through the social media, through the We Love Nogales, and what happened to Florida to promote the Friends through the social media.
That would be very helpful, yes. Okay, thank you, Santos. Ed? Okay. Item seven, Library Director's Report. Karina?
Thank you. March was a busy month for each library. We had Easter egg hunts on Nogales, Rio Rico, and Tupac, because in the meantime, Sonoyta was still closed, so we had those activities for children's, and then for teens, we had Easter egg painting, which went great. We continue with Lego Time, Storytime at the different libraries throughout the month. Summer Library Institute, another staff member and myself will be attending the Summer Library Institute, which is a long, week-long professional development event, taking place, brings together small and rural libraries from different regions of Arizona. The topics that we'll cover will be collecting development, programming, outreach, community engagement, project management, and more. This is a three-year program. This will be my first time attending, and the second time for staff member Laura Rodriguez. So we'll be attending that during the summer. Also, staff will be attending the Autism Awareness Event, that's something going on with the community, so the library will be present with a booth with information of our libraries and our activities. And Juanita did a great job going up over the update of library branch at Sonoyta. We do have a Sonoyta clerk, her name is Tiffany Gilbert, she's great, she's amazing, she, she knows how to work with, with kids, so that's, that's great. We have a lot of visits, people are coming back, so that's great news. So, yeah, thank you.
Good. Okay, any comments or concerns on this report for any member of the board? Okay, our, an item here that was left off of the agenda that should be on there is future agenda items, so we're still going to go through that, because there should be no discussion, just tell me if you have something on the agenda that you would like to be placed for the month of May, just tell us what that would be. Ed?
None right now. Updates on Friends and...
Okay, that's, Santos?
I don't have nothing.
Brianna?
Nothing.
Brianna? Anna?
Just update on Let's Read Santa Cruz.
Okay, Let's Read Santa Cruz. Juanita?
Oh, I, I would like to hear more about acquisitions, like an update on acquisitions at all the libraries, if you could fit that in. I'd really like to hear about that.
Just define, yeah, but what kind of acquisitions?
Books.
Just books?
No, books, films, whatever.
Films?
Yeah, not equipment.
Okay, just books and...
More interested in the books and films, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May the 8th, and it'll be at 10 o'clock here. Somebody confused about Wednesday, May the 8th?
No, then I'm going to be the chair.
Yes, you will be there. Wednesday, May the 8th is our next meeting at 10 o'clock and Anna will be chairing that committee and I'll be walking her through so she's prepped for the meeting in June. All righty? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 10:31. Motion by Anna, second by Santos, to adjourn this meeting at 10:31. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.